Shall we call the meeting to order?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Staff, and Members of the public present. It is 7:00 PM and I have started the meeting.
Thank you very much, Ruth. If you could do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Galen.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Carter is absent. Vice Chairman Thibault.
Present.
Chair Ramon.
Present.
Thank you. We have four Commissioners present.
Thank you for that. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask that my wife, Allison Ferris, who came to my last meeting, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for the ready and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, great. And then are there any other correspondence from Nun this afternoon?
No, we did not receive any correspondence for the meeting.
Great, okay. So we can jump right into Consent Calendar Item One, Approval of Draft, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes from February 26th of 2025. Commissioner Van Galen was not here.
I was not a member yet.
Right. Commissioner Jones or Vice Chairman Thibault, any comments on that? Can we have a motion to approve?
Mine's not working. It says a waiting item.
I do not have a button I can press.
I can take a voice motion.
So move Commissioner Jones.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chairman Thibault. Please vote.
Aye.
There's no button yet.
Okay. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Thibault?
Aye.
Chair Ramon?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes.
Okay, so we can move to PH1, Item 251296, Public Hearing, Consideration of a New Comprehensive Sign Ordinance. If we could have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and Community Members. I'm Emily Stadniki, current Planning Manager, and I'm the City's Lead on the Sign Code Ordinance Update. And I'm very happy to introduce our consultants, Laura Stetson and Allison Cook from MIG. I'm going to give you a very brief intro and hand it over to Laura. We always start with a "why" question. The sign code was last revised in 2005. There's been some important case law since then, and the Supreme Court clarified that cities cannot regulate the content of signs. Laura will touch more on this shortly. As you know, technology has evolved a lot in the last 20 years, and we want to ensure the code is reflective of the best approaches to regulate options that weren't addressed previously. As part of this process, we want to balance the needs of our local businesses with the community at large. We've employed strategies to improve the approval process for efficiency in a way that mirrors our new zoning code. And we've added graphics to make sure the code is easily understood. So we're really taking out this opportunity to review signage comprehensively. Laura?
Thank you, Emily. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, thank you for having us here this evening. And we're building off work that we did with you just about a year ago. If you can recall, we were before you to talk about the sign code. And we've been working hard with your staff, both Planning Staff and City Attorney, and we're happy to be here this evening to present the sign code to you. The first thing I want to touch on, because this is critically important as we walk through the rest of the presentation, is the need that a sign code have content neutrality. This is something that Emily mentioned that comes down from the Supreme Court. Case law is very clear that signs are a form of protected speech. And thus, the only thing that your sign code can do is regulate content, excuse me, not content, but can only address where signs can be located, how tall they can be, how much signage a business is allowed, how long a temporary sign can be up. So that's what time, place, and manner means. Also, a city cannot regulate businesses in a way different than, say, somebody who wants to put a sign on their residential property. So commercial speech, a business speech, and non-commercial speech, if somebody wants to put a sign in their front yard that says, "Protect free speech." Those are signs, and you don't care what it says. You just care about where it is, how long it's been there, how tall it is, and anything having to do with anything except for content. Also, any sign regulations have to forward a legitimate government purpose, such as preserving the aesthetic quality of a community, reducing clutter, and making sure that signs do not obstruct traffic or traffic flow in any manner. So those are the key things to know about signage. When we met with you last June, there were a couple of questions that we had that were policy questions that we needed some input on, so we would know what to put in the sign code, what to leave out of the sign code, and how to address certain things. We spent quite a bit of time talking about two things, iconic signs and creative signs. And an iconic sign is one that would probably not be allowed today under your sign code, because it's big, it's on the roof. But in the case of something like the Hellmann's Bakery sign, that's something that has a historic quality to it, and it's just iconic because of the image and what it says. And the question was, does the city want to regulate iconic signs in a manner that allows them to be moved to someplace else? And then with creative signs, this was to create regulations that would allow to color outside the lines a little bit, if you will, in terms of what the sign looks like, how big it might be. And in the case of what you see here, I think you could see that's probably a place where you could buy umbrellas. I hope that's what that is advertising. Those two items are not in the sign code. And Emily's going to touch on that at the very end. But we got feedback from the Planning Commission that those are things that maybe the sign code shouldn't address. It's not quite ready for it. Three other things that we asked you questions about in particular were roof signs, whether or not signs should be allowed on rooftops, or even projecting above rooftops. What about temporary signs? Signs like A-frame signs that businesses put out in front and take down, hopefully at the end of the day when their business is closed. And then lastly, the question about non-conforming signs. Signs that were legal when they were erected but would not meet the standards of today's code. How long could they be remaining if the business leaves and that sign is essentially abandoned? And so we'll talk about both A-frame signs, roof signs, as well as non-conforming signs in a little bit more detail. Emily highlighted some of the key things that the new sign code does, including restructuring it to incorporate graphics and tables to really improve ease of use. The rest of the things that are on here, I'm not going to read through them because we do want to go through them in a little bit of detail just to let you know what the key changes have been. But in terms of the last bullet there about billboards, billboards currently are not allowed in Culver City. And so the language has been made even more explicit in the code that billboards are not allowed in Culver City. And that is a policy direction that has been received and carry forward in this sign code update. First, with regard to the structure. The tables and graphics, then the graphics in particular, indicate the different types of signs. It's hard to describe a sign. It's better to show a drawing or a picture of what that sign actually is. So these are exhibits that are directly from the code itself. As you can see, we've taken pictures, and we have some graphics that we felt were a little bit cleaner and could more easily display what that particular sign is. And that's an eye chart for you, I think I apologize, on the table. But if you look at the sign code today, it's just pages and pages and pages of text. And so by putting things in tables, it makes it much easier for somebody to read and use. A-frame signs. In response to business owners' desires and discussions with the Planning Commission, A-frame signs in the new code are going to be allowed within the downtown Culver City Business District and the Culver City Arts Business Improvement District only. And not on public property, only on private property. So that would be within, I think the code says, within four feet of the front door of the business that is being advertised. They can only be out while the business is open, maybe half an hour before and half an hour after. And certainly, they cannot block pedestrian rights-of-way or any type of access or obstruct views that would impede traffic. So that is the proposal with regard to A-frame signs. In Culver City, because a lot of your buildings are built right up against the property line along the major streets, most of the signs that you see advertising businesses are not like the examples I showed earlier of that, the Blockbuster sign, which is a pole sign, but signs that are on buildings. And they can be on building walls, on awnings, on canopies, so in some manner attached to a building. And the code now regulates them all, different standards for each. And what this code does is consolidate those all into something called building signs or building mounted signs, giving developers and property owners the flexibility, whether they want something mounted exactly on the wall, like Brother's Sushi or Dear John's, or on an awning, or that's a canopy, the red canopy, or a metal awning in front of the store. All it says is, here's the square footage you can have. You, business owner, decide how you want to use that square footage to distribute the signage on your particular business. We had a little bit of time with you describing signs that are on the roof or extending above the roof line. We heard clearly not to continue to allow rooftop signs in Culver City. And so this issue of, how about signs extending above the roof? The direction was, no, don't do that either. So these two examples that you see here are things that would no longer be permitted. I don't think that the flower shop is actually open anymore. But so when you have a sign like that, kind of on a parapet, it would not be allowed to extend above the parapet. It could be either mounted on a parapet or on a false mansard roof, just so that if somebody has a roof that extends almost to the top of their door, you think, oh my goodness, where could they put the sign? They're allowed to put it on the mansard roof. So that is not a roof sign. It is a false mansard roof sign. Or a parapet sign would be allowed as well. But nothing extending above the roof line. Today, the city does require master sign plans. So if there is a shopping center, a multi-tenant center, a master sign plan is required. But it's complicated in that it doesn't give flexibility to the property owner. When new tenants come in, they have to keep coming back. And so both the multi-business sign program and the master sign program provide more flexibility to a property owner to distribute how the signage can be within a master plan center. And then it's really up to them, once the master sign plan is approved, to regulate what that signage, how it goes, does it meet the sign code? Certainly, building permits would be required, but it's more in the hands of the person who managed those properties to figure out how to allocate the signage and whether or not they all have to be the same color or where they can be on a building, as long as it doesn't run counter to things that are in the sign code. Real estate signs. Not regulated today. And if you go out on a Tuesday or a weekend, you will see realtors who have propped open house signs on public property. It might be in a median, it might be on a parkway strip, it might be in somebody's front yard. And the concern is making sure these don't proliferate, recognizing that they are almost all the time put on public property without any type of encroachment permit. And so does the city assume liability in that case? In order to regulate them in some manner, because people see the benefit of having these open house signs for the benefit of selling homes in the community, the sign code designates these as temporary signs. They would only be allowed on Tuesday, which is typically when there are either open houses or caravans that the realtors sponsor, and on weekends. And the realtors would be required to come in and get an annual permit so that they know what the rules are in terms of where you can put them, when you have to take them down, how big they can be, because there are regulations. Typically, they're A-frame signs like this. But it's something just to make sure that there's a little bit more control and oversight on the city's part. Non-conforming abandoned signs. We talked about what happens when a business leaves. Unfortunately, not everybody can thrive, and a business might go out of its building that it's in. And a building and a sign can sit vacant for some period of time. And sometimes, like these signs, these are signs that would not be allowed today. And one on the Blockbuster, that's a pole sign. The other is a roof-mounted sign, which would not be allowed by the code. The question is, in the city's attempt to really start to change the character and the aesthetic quality of Culver City, would these be things that you would want to continue? Currently, if a sign is not used within 90 days, meaning a new business does not come in and replace and reuse the sign within 90 days of the prior business leaving, that sign is considered abandoned and has to come down and would lose its non-conforming rights. Sometimes, three months really isn't a long period of time for a property owner when you're trying to get a new tenant in, get tenant improvements done, and get all the permits that you need. And so in the new sign code, rather than 90 days, there is a 180-day period, gives the property owner the opportunity to re-tenant the space and reuse a non-conforming sign and not consider it abandoned. Those are the code highlights for the key things that are changed in the zoning code. And we're here to answer any specific questions you have. Before you this evening, for your recommendations, are also a couple of other minor code amendments that are related to the sign code. One is just making sure that definitions are consistent in the definitions section of the zoning code with the sign code. To provide an allowance for something called an administrative modification to allow a 10% increase in sign area if something meets particular conditions. So that's a change to the administrative modifications provisions. And then lastly, there are requirements against putting signs in the public right-of-way. Because we just talked about the real estate signs and their ability to be put in the right-of-way, we had to modify another section of the municipal code as well. The SEQA question. This project, adoption of an ordinance, has been deemed exempt from SEQA. So you don't have to worry about SEQA tonight. And with that, I will turn it back over to Emily for the recommendation. And I will stay up here with any questions you might have. And my colleague Allison Cook, who wrote the code, knows it intimately. So if there's something I can't answer, Allison will step up and answer for us.
Thanks, Laura. So creative signs and iconic signs have been removed from the proposed ordinance for now. Further study is necessary to determine appropriate findings and design standards, and we didn't want to hold up the rest of the new regulations. So staff will revisit the issue and possibly bring back an amendment at a later date. In summary, the proposed amendments will establish sign regulations that are content-neutral, clear, flexible, and reflect best practices and evolving technologies while maintaining a high-quality design aesthetic for the city. Staff asserts the findings for the zoning code amendment as outlined in the proposed resolution can be made and recommends the Planning Commission recommend to City Council approval of the aforementioned amendments to the city's sign ordinance. Just to note, there are a few numbering errors that will be corrected in the ordinance that goes to City Council. That concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
One quick question, just as far as the scope of tonight and the scope of the approval. It's a recommendation on this draft. Would it then come back before going to council? No?
No, it's actually going to council on July 14th.
Okay. And pending any possible edits and amendments that we recommend tonight?
Yes. Those will be reported to council.
Okay, great. Any other clarifying questions like that? I had a content clarifying question.
I did want to ask how this goes to council, because what I was certainly hoping is that if changes are made here, what goes to council is our recommendation with our changes in it, rather than this document along with a separate report saying, well, Planning Commission has suggestions that you can consider or not consider. You see the difference?
I do. I guess we can see how extensive your suggestions are and look at it then.
Okay.
All right.
Any other kind of procedural questions related like that? Okay, so clarifying, can we, do we need to open the public hearing before we start to talk about content questions?
I think you might as well open the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones. Seconded by Vice Chairman Thibault.
Thank you. Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Van Galen?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Thibault?
Aye.
Chair Ramon?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Van Galen, do you have questions for the staff or consultant?
Yes. Are there any regulations regarding brightness? That can be a concern if you have a very bright sign, even if it's small.
We do not have anything in the code that regulates luminosity of the sign. And that would apply to, you know, lights, like incandescent lights or neon lights or things that are illuminating the sign itself. Digital signs are not allowed by this code, so that there isn't a concern with LED lighting.
Okay, so I'm thinking of the theater right here. That's got a big LED sign, so I guess that would not be permissible under the current or new regulations.
The sign that shows the, like, Showtime and stuff like that?
The Kirk Douglas Theater, I believe that the signage on that is LED. Is it not?
Oh, the marquee and all that?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think that's neon sign, an old neon sign.
My mistake.
Yeah.
And to clarify, the digital signs or LED signs is defined as letters, numbers, figures, images, characters that utilize computer-generated messages or electronic means of changing copy. So if it's just an LED, you know, bulb, that would be okay?
Right.
If it's not control in the computer-generated way?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
For sure. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thanks. I want to ask staff about if there's plans to onboard realtors to legal sign usage. I don't know, like, I would imagine that if they don't, if we don't do something, they'll just keep doing what they're doing and not, you know, get permits and stuff.
Yeah, I think we were going to discuss it with code enforcement. Obviously, we'll do sort of like a PR push and make everyone aware, put it on the website, social media, that kind of thing, our usual methods. And then maybe we'll issue warnings for a while, that kind of thing. It was the plan.
Okay, cool. The only other thing I wanted to ask about was, so with that in mind of kind of like, you know, making it legal so that we can regulate it and get more compliance. I was thinking about the A-frame signs. I think this came up when we talked about it last. I see them all the time outside downtown. And they're often, you know, blocking the right-of-way. And I'm thinking, like, I would imagine that they'll still be there. People will still have them. It means a good idea to, if we expect that they're going to be all over the city, should we allow them all over the city and have these restrictions in place? I don't know. If you have thoughts on that?
Just the philosophy behind A-frame signs is they're low-scale, they're pedestrian-oriented. And so the thinking was, these should be in pedestrian districts as another way to advertise and lure people in. But if it's along Washington or another, you know, a major street, A-frame signs don't really serve the same purpose. And so that was the thinking. And it might be a test case. Let's see how they work for these two business districts. And is there a clamor for more? But the ones that you mentioned that are there today and that would be there in the future outside of these two districts would be considered illegal signs.
Right. I guess my thought is that just that this doesn't, they should be in more pedestrian districts, but they are currently also not in, they're in districts that are not as pedestrian-friendly. But so the business owners, like, see a use for them. I'm thinking of, like, well, like, Sepulveda, I see them. On Washington, west of downtown, I see them. And it would be nice to, I don't think, I don't think I mind them there. It would be nice if they were, you know, leaving four feet of clearance, for example.
And the ones you see now, are they on the sidewalks?
Yes.
And not near the entrance to the business, which is what the new ordinance is going to require, within four feet of the entrance, on private property? And public with encroachment permits.
I see.
So they'd have to have an encroachment permit if they are on public property.
Okay, okay. Right. So they wouldn't be allowed on the sidewalk? So they're, so they wouldn't be allowed on, on the sidewalk at all?
They would be subject to an encroachment-
If they had a permit.
From the city, correct.
And that would be true in downtown also.
Let me back up. The current code allows them on private property within four feet of the entrance as temporary signs, put them out, take them down. They can be on the sidewalk on public property with an encroachment permit. That is not the case anywhere else in the city, just the two improvement, the business, downtown and the arts district are the only places where they would be allowed.
I see. So if it was, if it was extended outside of those two areas, then they could have them on the sidewalk, they would need a permit to do that.
Correct.
What is the, what does it take to get an encroachment permit? Or to get and maintain one? I don't know, a business that does this all, that wants to do this all the time?
Yeah, it's an annual permit through Public Works.
Okay. And so the additional requirement here of maintaining four feet of access is written here talking about the ones on, that are on private property, but it would also apply to ones that are on, like, when you get the encroachment permit, they're going to have that same requirement, is that right? Okay. Okay. As for questions, I think that's it. Thanks.
Vice Chair Menthee?
I have a number of-
You had it, the other way, read.
I have a number of questions and comments. I'm not sure how we want to do that, but I do want to piggyback on where Commissioner Jones was here. When these A-frame permits are put out, they're all on the sidewalk. That's where they all get put. As a general matter, there is no private property in front of the door. That's just not the reality for where these are. So I thought when we talked about this, the idea was that these would be generally legal to put out essentially in the public right-of-way as long as they did not obstruct the four-foot ADA clearance that you need for the sidewalk. And now I'm hearing that they're going to be, they're going to remain effectively illegal, and we're going to need an encroachment permit to do what everyone is actually doing right now. And then part of the idea was to regularize what has become a common practice. So that's something I'd like to reconsider. And I, whether it's limited to the business districts or not, I mean, the, I think the intention, and I brought that up last time, was that we know they're currently illegal throughout the city, and they've become commonplace, especially since COVID. People may not remember that during COVID, we simply waived all the sign restrictions in certain areas for a while, and people got used to putting these things up. So whether it's citywide or just in the, and I thought the idea was you could, you could do more in the business districts, because they're clearly meant to be pedestrian. So if there's an objection elsewhere, well, okay, just do it in the place where it's happening. But I'm really concerned about requiring a second, a permit for these beyond simply permitting them and within certain guidelines. Because it just, you're not going to get permit applications, they're all going to be illegal again. So is there, is there some city requirement here that simply says we're going to need an encroachment permit no matter what?
I'll jump in. That's the general, that's the general rule for use of the right-of-way, use of sidewalks, use of, you know, public right-of-ways, that it requires an encroachment permit from the Public Works Department. And so the, the intention here was to allow these, but require them to get an encroachment permit, which is a, as staff has said, it's an over-the-counter permit that you would get from the Public Works Department.
What's the value of having them get an encroachment permit? I mean-
I think it's an opportunity to tell them what the rules are.
Okay.
Because this, these are exempt from our sign code but require a permit. So they're not coming in to get a sign permit from planning. They're just going to Public Works for an encroachment permit.
And what's the cost of that going to be?
I don't have that information. We might be able to look it up tonight, but I'm not sure.
Can we assume it's a, you know, $100 nominal permit or something like that? Or is it?
I think for many people, $100 will not feel nominal for what they're already doing. You won't get application-
$100 a year for a business?
Honestly, yes. Right now, they're putting out these signs to drive in business, they're doing it all over the place.
I think an option, if you're concerned about costs, is to make recommendations to the City Council to create a specialized sign encroachment permit fee that is less than a, than a standard public right-of-way encroachment permit fee. And that's, it's not something that would be established, the zoning code would be established through our, our fee resolution.
Is this the temporary storefront encroachment permit? If you don't know, that's okay. I just, I just pulled up the fees, and it's, the recommended, recommendation in the latest study was 647.
600?
647.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that's a lot.
That, well, no one's going to pay that.
That may, I'm not, I'm speculating.
I could be wrong.
Maybe more of a physical encroachment.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know the answer to that. We would have to find out.
And that's, and that's the recommended, that's not like the, yeah. Or I, I don't, if, anyway. I, on this, while we're on this subject, if we can talk about it?
Yes.
Yeah. I feel the way you feel about the fee, I think. And I don't feel that way in the case of the realtors, and I'm trying to figure out why. And, and in my head, a little bit, like, you know, if, if a store is always having a problem, we know where the store is, we know they want to have this sign in the same spot every time, you know, we can complain to the city and, and the city can, can deal with it and say, "Don't do that again," you know, or you'll get a fine or whatever, whatever. Realtors are in different places at different times, you're less able to do that, you want them to come in every year and remind, remind them of the rules and I-
The realtors are also, excuse me, they're also putting theirs up in residential neighborhoods.
Oh, exactly, yes.
And these sandwich board signs, these A-frames are always, they're always next to the business. That's why, I mean, okay, there's a couple that go on Town Plaza in the middle of the plaza that probably wouldn't survive in these regulations. I don't think anybody cares about that. But for the most part, they're putting it up next to the businesses for the purposes our consultant was describing, is it makes it a lively pedestrian area, you see them and so forth.
Today's special, happy hour, blah, blah, blah. Right.
Yeah. So I would, saying this, agreeing that I see them, I see them as different. And I want the business, the businesses that are putting out these A-frames to comply with the law. But I don't, I don't, I think I would support a recommendation to consider this. I don't know, maybe, maybe a lesser fee would be okay, but it seems, my, my worry is, is the worry that they'll continue to do it and it will just be, you know, the Wild West.
If I could interject for a minute, another reason for doing it, which a lot of cities use this rationale, is that it's on city property and they need, and liability needs to be assigned if somebody trips over it, runs into it. And so through a permit process, people understand, and I don't know if the other encroachment permits have waivers in them or not, but that's another reason that many, many cities do require encroachment permits.
Meaning it shifts liability to the business owner from the city if there was an incident related to the sign in the public right-of-way?
Yeah, that's correct. Our, our encroachment permits, not all of them carry an insurance requirement, but they all carry an indemnification waiver requirement where the business owner takes responsibility. So if an accident were to occur and the city were sued, we could tender our defense to the, the business owner.
I think that's an important feature of the encroachment permit, unless it was part of the standard business permit for a, but no, no. So I think reducing the fee to make it what would be nominal, $25 or something like that?
I don't know what our, what our least expensive fee is for these things, but if you, if we want people to apply for them and perform this, this service, it should be, these are cheap signs, right? You can go buy these things for 20 bucks and put them out, and that's what people do. Some of the nicer ones are like 100, right? That's, and the really nice ones, you can change the copy in them. But they are meant to be extremely inexpensive, so.
There are other encroachment permits that are 150 and 200, so it depends on, as Christina said, we could create, make a recommendation for a new sign encroachment permit.
Who enforces this, who would enforce this regulation regarding?
Angry neighbors.
Well, no, I mean, would that be the engineering, or Public Works, rather?
It, it depends. Code enforcement is usually the first line who receives complaints to Commissioner Menthee, to Vice Chair Menthee's point. Much of our enforcement is complaint-driven.
Right.
So it'd be neighbors or pedestrians.
But then it would be, is that a city planning official then? I'm not sure.
Enforcement Services is under our, is under HHS, our Human Services Division.
Health and Human Services.
So I'm thinking, I'm playing this out like a business owner in my mind. If I was a business owner, obvi, not obviously, but I would disregard, I would just put a sign up and wait for somebody to make it an issue. So let's say that happens, somebody, some neighbor calls, code enforcement comes, they, what, issue a fine?
No, they issue a notice of violation, and they provide information about how to get a legal permit.
I see. And then if you're that business owner, you can choose, you have several options. Either you get that permit, which is what everyone wants, you take down your sign, which I don't think anybody really wants unless it's-
Right.
-a big issue, or you keep offending. And I, I could see option three being very tempting to a lot of people, a lot of small businesses. And I think we need to do what we can to keep that from happening. Is there any type of longer-term permit we could get for people, like five years or something, so that it's something they could do once and not have to think about it again?
I would defer to the Public Works Department, who has a better handle on what the needs are in the right-of-way at any point as to how long of a permit they would, they would be able to issue. But that could certainly be a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Because the cure is instantaneous. You just pick it up and move it. It's not like you're building something, building infrastructure within the public right-of-way. It's, I'm trying to think of the, the social negative of, of these unpermitted signs.
I think it's less the, the cure for somebody who falls and breaks their leg is not to pick up the sign, though.
That's true.
That's a lawsuit and a hospital stay and stuff like that.
I see.
I'd almost want to have the Downtown Business Association do like a campaign walk door, I mean, you're in, they are in connection with business owners, and maybe there's a way to just educate from that way to keep the option number three from happening.
Business organizations in the city will communicate about new sign rules, because that's sort of their function.
Yeah.
I will also say that if you're worried about tripping downtown, you should talk to Public Works about lots of, lots of things on the side.
Sidewalks, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's, I understand that it's a legal issue, but it's not one we would spend a lot of time worrying about, other than just checking the box. So, so yeah, maybe the resolution here, as you were suggesting, is to recommend a nominal fee and the longest, a nominal fee in the long, long term.
I think we've got a general agreement up here. Let's move on from this issue, and we'll have that as part of our recommendation as a sandwich sign encroachment permit specifically, that's, you know, $25. That comes with education of the business owner.
And I just, I don't want to, you're super role as chair, but I am curious what people's thoughts are about the geographic limitation.
I jump in, because it seems like the commission's interested in discussing this substance. Do you want to check and see if there are any public comment before jumping into discussion?
That's a really good point. I apologize. Ruth, is there any public comment for this item?
We do not have anyone registered to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone wants to be chair tonight.
Somebody's going to get their chance next time.
I just, I didn't know if there was an issue about that. I mean, I think that, from my point of view, the limitation to the business districts probably makes some sense, because where these things get complained about, they get complained about in, in other neighborhoods for the most part, but just take a temperature of it.
No, I mean, I, I would kind of agree with you in a sense, you know, if you think about areas like Washington and Sepulveda, you know, there's a nice little clump of businesses that are Tanner's and Fesho and blah, 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 that have, that could benefit from the same thing as a business. And I, I wouldn't be opposed myself to just allowing the same thing there, as long as they got that same permit. But I don't know, I mean, we should look to the consultant to see if there's precedent for that in other areas, or if there's-
It depends on what city you're in. It's, it's all over the map.
Is it? Okay.
But, but as I mentioned at the outset, the focus is on pedestrian-oriented districts, just because of the nature of the signs.
Okay. I mean, I think we, as a commission, always have been of the view that less regulation, if it's not necessary, is, is the, is the way to go. And in this case, why would we not support the small business or the business that's not in the district and let them do the same thing? I don't see, I don't see why we should limit it just to downtown and East Washington.
I concur. Yeah, I do, I'd agree.
Okay.
Yes, I was like, okay.
No, good call. So that'll be part of our recommendation as well. Just a slight modification there. You had a list, though.
I do.
Please.
I mean, if we could go through your presentation, it's easy to call it out that way. Well, I'm looking at the ordinance, actually, on your table 3-11, temporary signs. It may not be in your presentation, maybe.
Yeah, it might be easier for us just to look at the code-
Resolution.
-itself. And just for page number-
I might note it's worth to the resolution to sort of-
Okay. It's on page 22 of the code itself. I don't know what number that is in the resolution. So in the attachment, it's page 22.
So is that something that can be put up on the screen here?
They're working on it already.
Is it possible to blow it up a tiny bit?
So if we could go to F.
Is it possible to blow it up a tiny bit?
Just hit the plus sign, yeah.
So if we could go to F. When I look at F, is this where election signs would be? And my impression was that's where it would be.
Election signs are non-commercial message.
Right. Is, I just, which, which one of these, is it under F?
The yard.
Yes.
Okay. And so I was just wondering, I was concerned about the 16-square-foot cumulative total on one property, because I probably blew past that this last election cycle myself with five local offices and federal offices as well. So I, you're keeping in mind that we should be allowing people to do what they normally do in this town.
But is that normally, or just somebody who likes to put a lot of signs in their yard?
Well, wackos are okay sometimes. I, I'm just saying that it's, it is common in this town during a lot, because we have both school board and city council, we have five offices up at any given time, that if you happen to want to put up five signs plus, you know, any state offices or federal offices, and you're really into that, you're going to blow past 16 square feet pretty quickly. I don't- I don't know if there's a current regulation, but I'd rather have a, either a larger square footage or none, frankly. But I don't know how fellow commissioners feel about that.
I don't know that I would want to see none. I mean, I just don't. I mean, would you want to have properties that are just covered in political signs constantly? Like covered?
I mean, my answer is, look, we have a First Amendment. We have free speech. At a certain level, our judgment that it's not aesthetic is not a reason to tell people they shouldn't make political messages, you know? I don't think very many people are going to do that. But, and according to this, they're going to have to remove them within seven days of the election. So that's what it looks like.
Right, but that could be there for six months.
Indeed. I mean, I think it's a price worth paying and I would, I would increase this. I can't think of what the appropriate square footage would be, but 16 square feet, four by four, that's.
I mean, each one, each one of those signs is probably a foot and a half square.
It's, it's three, the average one is three square.
Is it three? Okay.
Three square feet. So you get, you get five with this. You get five, you get the Culver City elections, you have to leave the, you know, the ballot measure off.
Yes, I blew past this.
Yeah.
It does seem small in, in the scheme of things, especially with respect to political speech. I mean, is the only reason not, is the only reason to limit it aesthetic? What's the downside of having more and longer?
I, I like, I think a square footage, I like square footage limit rather than, you know, number because I don't want to see, you know, 10 by 10 sign. But I would support increasing it.
But this is a cumulative. A 10 by 10 sign is.
Yeah, it would be 100 square feet.
Well, no, I was saying.
It'd be a structure that would have to resist the wind. If we had tiny, 101-foot signs.
Commissioner's point is he would want to see a limit on square footage, not the number of signs.
Right, but this is a cumulative total, not a single total.
Right.
Right, but a one four-by-four sign would be 16 square feet.
I, I get it, but if, like our colleague here would prefer more smaller signs, why not?
Well, no, I, I think this would permit four smaller signs, but it wouldn't permit the, I'm just, I'm telling you, it wouldn't permit the seven signs I had up in, in November.
So if you, if you double this to 30 square feet.
Or at least the 24.
Right, then you end up with, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, 20, 24, I think it sounds good to me, but I'm, I'm open to different, different number there.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they, now, now we've got a lot of signs. That's, I could live with 24. I think that at least.
It's eight, eight standard signs, eight standard.
Are you on board with that as well, Commissioner Van Gaal?
I actually am probably more generous than our vice chair. I don't see a need for a limit. But I understand the interest in one.
Okay, so we've got three of us that are interested in 24 square feet as a, as more of an allowance.
I would be prepared to agree with Commissioner Van Gaal. We have no limit. But for the sake of reaching a compromise, I can pick a number.
I guess, can we ask the consultant, is there, other than aesthetics, is there like kind of reasoning why you have a limit on this in the first place?
Aesthetics and for the reason that you mentioned, Chair, is that if it doesn't come down after, or Commissioner Jones, if it doesn't come down after seven days, it stays and stays and stays. And so you've got a lot of signs for a period extending beyond the end of the election. And three may be less egregious to one's eyes than 12.
I, I still remain in my position. I have no problem with them staying. I don't have a problem with them staying after the election. I see it as political speech. That should be continual, not.
There's, there is a, there is findings that we are bound by for community consistency, though, for aesthetics, right? That is one of the findings for. And I think speech is one thing, but in a way that would be consistent in the community. To have one house with 25 signs that just sat there all the time would be inconsistent with the remaining neighborhood.
And Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, Commissioner Van Gaal, just to make sure that we're talking only about signs associated with elections. Number E above that is for signs of any nature whatsoever. Do not have a time limit on them and they're limited to 16 square feet. So if you wanted to put a sign in your yard forever that says protect free speech, you would be allowed to do that.
I, I understand. I understand this distinction. Thank you.
Okay, so are we in an agreement that we'll add a recommendation to increase that, but not make it unlimited? Okay?
I feel like we need more discussion on that.
Okay.
Because I feel like we don't have a, I mean, I think we, we owe it to council to give a specific recommendation one way or another, either with a number or with unlimited.
No, 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 no. I was saying at 24 square feet, like, let's pick a number. It could be 32 if some, if there's a reason that that makes everybody nod their head. But to their point, E allows 16 square feet of persistent sign for like class of 2022, or, you know, class of 2029 to stay or Black Lives Matter, or This is a Free Space, or whatever it is, right? So you have that persistent allowance and this is an addition to that just for political or any other short-term.
Understood.
Okay. Okay. We have to move on somehow.
Well, you're asking what's okay.
Are you in agreement with 24 square feet if we up that? Do you have a proposition to make? Do you have a motion to make for a number?
All right, I can agree with 24 on the, on F.
Right. Okay.
All right, so table three 14, we could move on to that. This is about the, the real estate signs. The, the question I had is that there's a limitation to the weekends or Tuesdays. And I realize that those may be common days for open houses, but I don't like us sort of saying, I think it should be any day of the week, frankly. I don't think we should, or just the weekend, or just picking Tuesdays. I'd rather just have the any day of the week. I have concern about where these signs end up. I don't like these being placed all over the, the public right-of-way, but that's what we do with them.
But is the, is the code saying that the other part, the other days, it is not allowed? They are only allowed on Tuesday and on the weekend?
Correct. That's, that's an E and, keep going, please. There we go, last, last bullet point. On weekends and Tuesdays, I guess, just occasionally be, I would take out word between shall and from and just jump, oh, sorry. The signs shall only be displayed for no more than one hour before the event begins and no later than after the event ends and remove the, the specific day limitations. Because we're going to get it anyway. Someone's going to have an open house on a Wednesday.
They don't have, I, they have specific open, like Tuesdays, the broker's open house and the weekend is the other open house and they don't, they don't have open houses on random days because people aren't driving around looking for an open house on random days. Like it's a, it's an established.
Can we?
Protocol.
Could we set it to one day during the week and then if it's Tuesday, everyone's happy? Because the industry might change, you know, they might say, let's do Wednesday.
But how do you regulate that? A realtor can have an open house for House X on a Tuesday and House Y on a Wednesday and House Z on a Thursday and now you've got the sign there for three days, three different days.
I get, I'm not following.
We're just, I, the spirit of this here is to keep signs from sitting out all, every day of the week. That's just saying this house is going to have an open house on Saturday and it's there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to, so that people know that on Sunday the open house is there. And I don't think we want that. We don't want real estate signs persistently in our community.
I, I agree, but I don't think that's what this says. I think what this says is that the signs shall be displayed no more than one hour before the event begins to no later than one hour after the event ends. So whichever day of the week it is, it only goes up an hour before the open house starts. That being the case, I see no reason to limit the open houses to weekends and Tuesdays, even if currently that's the practice.
I, I do see, I, I, I kind, I kind of agree with this. I also, I also think there's like a, I don't know, the, the Tuesday open house sounds like a, I don't know, an anti-competitive thing somehow that, that we don't want to uphold, but like, I see like a huge enforcement benefit to being able to just drive around on Wednesdays and we know they're all, we know we can take them all down. Like that, that, that seems like a huge benefit to me. I don't know, I don't know in practice if that, you know, I'm kind of imagining how, how it would, how it would work, but like, I don't know. That, that seems like, that seems like a benefit to me of, of having this. And I, and I don't, I don't think there's a huge, a huge downside because I, you know, I, I think like, right now, if you see one of these open house signs out on a Wednesday, it's almost certainly because it was left out from Tuesday and not because there's an open house on Wednesday. So like most of the instances that, that this is going to deal with are, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if realtors would even quibble with this, this restriction.
They would ignore it.
Sure. But, but, but it makes it easier for the city to just, again, take down all the signs on Wednesday that are there.
We could also do a time of day if it's 9:00 PM.
Well, yeah, I mean, I was thinking that too, but then do we, does the city want to have, I don't know, pay people to work at 9:00 PM?
No.
Hey, I think that's fair. Code enforcement has, you know, we only have a limited number of code enforcement officers.
Right.
They may not even be on the weekend. I think given the spirit that this is specifically to regulate established real estate practice, I'm happy with it the way it is. I wouldn't object to removing the days, but I think that it's specifically meant to regulate current practice.
Well, I'd like to see if we have, if ever, what all four commissioners think on the issue.
Do we need to write, do we need to remove the days?
Just confirming that, yes, there is, the, the broker's caravan is a standard in Southern California for, on Tuesdays and that's when all broker open houses occur and that is why that date was selected.
I can get on board with this.
The way it is?
The way it's written.
Okay.
It's not ideal, but yeah, I, I would leave it as, as, as written there.
Right then. Moving on, I worked on the code section, so forgive me for that, but you might be able to find it. It's 17.330.050. It's on page 54 of the ordinance. I did save that. It's about events, right, that, you're actually looking right at it right now. City-sponsored. This is a definition of a city-sponsored event. I, I would just recommend that we simply cross-refer that to whatever the current definition of city sponsorship is because this might change. And I guarantee if we leave it here in the sign code, people are going to forget to change it when the city adopts a new policy on sponsoring.
I'm going to check, but this may be the only definition of city-sponsored. I can double-check.
I think it is the only one now. I just know that it's, it's a.
Oh, understood. Yeah, we, we had a discussion actually about removing this because it does seem, it's an odd place to have it, but because we don't have it in another section of the code, the city attorney wanted to keep it in.
Well, I know it's in the use of town plaza. And maybe, unless that's a policy, I assume that's a code.
Our town plaza use policy is a, is a policy.
Not a resolution?
It's not a, a code section. It's not part of our municipal code.
Okay, well, I mean, I didn't want a duplicate of wherever it was, but if this is actually the only place where it is, it so be it.
And pardon me, Vice Chair, it does say for the purposes of this section. So it means just for the sign code. If it, if in the future it were defined as something different in another part of the code, it would apply to that section of the code and not to the sign code.
And I, it looks like the. Well, no, that was, that was just a staff report. I, there's a, there's a staff report that talks about the, the policy of city-sponsored events and cross-references this, you know, the predecessor to this in the current sign code. So like, I think, I think this is actually where it lives.
That, that's what I just heard and that shocked me.
Yes, interesting.
Okay. The things you learn. Just a. So a question about the non-conforming signs. I'm going to ask a specific question. It's easier that way. If you look at what's now Palley Hotel, there's a big sign on top that says Hotel West End. It hasn't been Hotel West End for a very long time. The building was completely renovated and the owner decided to keep the old sign. We're not changing that possibility, right? Whether they're non-conforming, our 180-day rule, a new owner can just move in and, and start a new business but keep the existing sign if they like it. Is that right?
I mean, I think that is, sort of falls into the iconic sign aspect of things, like some interesting sign that we think is special and wants to stay, which is not included in this, this version of the code because we needed to do more work on it.
I have another question related to that. If, if the regulations are content neutral, does it matter that it's for a defunct business or not, so long as the sign is maintained?
It would count against their sign allowance. And so if they want to keep it and say it's a sign, that just means they have less signage to advertise the business that's actually there. It's a choice they would make.
But it would not be an abandoned sign at that point, would it?
I mean, the, one answer is that I don't think we're going to reach back into existing like that situation. We're not going to now call that sign non-conforming. I think it could stand as being grandfathered in. But if you're talking about for, if that instance were to occur again, then there, it may not happen as easily as it did now.
I want to call that out. I mean, that's, that's, you know, I mean, my, my general understanding is that signs that are currently up are, if they're non-conforming, they're allowed to remain as long as the business is fair and I get that. And so if they have a non-conforming sign today, I assume that, because it just gets to continue for as long as they get to. So I'm not really worried about that. But I don't know where else in the city we might see historic buildings changed. I don't want to adopt a rule that, while we're waiting for a historic sign ordinance to come in, that basically says you don't get to keep the historic sign, which often is an attractive part of a building to the purchaser. So there's some way we can amend that to essentially say that if the, the business can maintain, if the new owner chooses to maintain the sign and is not abandoned.
I'm thinking of the, to your point, of the Blockbuster sign. Blockbuster's gone. And of course, I know it disappeared. Nobody really missed it. But now there's a sense of nostalgia in seeing that Blockbuster sign, even if there's no Blockbuster. It's from a time gone by. It's, it will be the helm sign if it gets the chance.
Emily, a quick question because I apologize that I don't know. Would that sign be protected under the city's historic preservation ordinance? Would that sign be protected under the city's historic preservation ordinance?
She's pretty sure. I mean, our ordinance does include signs, our historic preservation ordinance does include signs, but there is, there may be a higher threshold for, um, you know, character-defining feature and original, original construction and some things like that, which we might not necessarily, it's a higher bar, right, to, to make it like, quote unquote, historic and designated. So, um, I think that it's, again, this is kind of why we were trying to do this iconic sign, it's just it's going to take a little more time to get those details.
I think, you know, given the confusion, not confusion, but given the, the need for clarification for those sections, I think we have to, you'll have to just hold on to that until that comes up. I recognize that you may not know what happens to a sign between now and then, but we can't make their process go any faster, and we should not confuse the current code sections with something that doesn't belong there. So, let's...
I, I'm, and I know we're not supposed to talk about specific signs, so I won't, but I feel like it, it's, it's a concern to me, too, that there could be a sign that needs to be torn down before we get this, you know, the, the next bit of this done. And I wonder if, if, if the city council could give some kind of direction about that.
I suppose city council could give a direction to code enforcement, to...
Right.
Delay enforcement against, uh, non-conforming abandoned signs until these new portions of the ordinance are in place.
And we, and we've seen, I mean, I, I don't like that because we've seen that, that kind of direction can last for a decade as the, the, you know, ordinance never comes, you know, you, you never take up the topic again. But I, actually, given that this is staff-driven, as opposed to like, city council, like, deciding they want to take up this policy again, right? You're, you're working on it, you're going to have something to present, then I feel more comfortable with that kind of direction in this case. I mean, we're not giving that direction, but...
We could recommend that direction.
We could recommend that direction.
Also, there may be an opportunity to do a master sign program for that, for that situation, where they get extra, like, we could build that in, where they are, you know, they're getting extra ten percent more signage under the circumstance or something like that.
Is there, is abandoned defined in this code? It is, right? Abandoned sign?
Yeah.
A, a non-conforming sign for a business, a use that has not been there for proposed one hundred and eighty days. Currently, it's ninety, it becomes abandoned at ninety days.
And how is that, the start date of those ninety days determined?
We have different methods. If, sometimes we look at Google Maps to see Google Earth whether that business was open. Sometimes it's the latest business license, but we use different methods and kind of give them the benefit of the doubt and the last sort of known activity there.
I like the old signs. I'd like to see them remain if they can, much like, uh, the hotel that was mentioned earlier.
Next item?
How we, we reached a resolution on that? No word?
Well, one thing we need to make clear is that it doesn't just apply to the old signs, the pretty signs, it would apply to all signs. So, one thing we could do is add a year, signs over, you know, I don't know, thirty years old, fifty years old, whatever we want to say, we could have some, carve out something maybe for them in the meantime.
I wouldn't have a problem with doing that. I think that's, I think our interest here is in signs that have been there for a while. And if, if that makes us more comfortable with this direction, I would be...
Would that, what if the building owner wanted to remove it? Is that going to make them keep it until this other sign code comes up?
There, I think there could be an incentive for building owners to keep the signs, and then if, when you, when the business changes hands, they would get, you know, potentially additional square footage of, of signage because they have pre-existing signs. So that, that could be a, a potential consequence, and depending on how you feel about proliferation of signs, you might have a different interpretation of the impacts on the city from that.
I don't, I wasn't thinking that, well, we'll flush this out when we come back, but for now, I don't think we would require the, um, a sign to stay because that, that's sort of a harder bar to like, you know, if, that would only be if it was a historic resource or something like that, so...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's what we meant. Okay, so we'll add a recommendation for a temporary, uh, kind of, uh, what's the word?
Stay of enforcement?
Stay of enforcement, thank you, and of signs until this comes back.
Abandoned signs.
Of abandoned signs until this comes back.
And did you want to say over a certain number of years old?
More than ten years old?
That sounds right to me.
Ten years. That's pretty recent.
Ten?
Is there anything, ten years is not very long. I agree.
Well, I, my feeling on it is like, we don't, we don't know what the right number is, we haven't had any information on the right number, and this is supposed to be a temporary thing. So I think ten feels safe to me, if, to protect what we're concerned about protecting.
If you're thinking about benchmarks, fifty years old is when something's considered historic in California. Some cities use forty-five years as a benchmark, so it's something that was, and, and my guess is something that would be historic here, maybe ten, twenty years ago. I don't remember the sign, it has been in place since the nineties, and so you would not have had any of signs like those established within that period. It's going to be a much longer timeframe, twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty years.
I'll jump in. Red. Um, our historical, our, our ordinance, our historic preservation ordinance has a fifty-year threshold for historic structures.
Right, but we're also coming back with possibly iconic signs. Uh, you know, I, I can't right now think of a sign that falls in that category in this city, and I, there's no point me naming one anyway, but, um, I would just like us to have that process in place.
I would just advocate for another year besides ten. Ten doesn't, I don't, I, I'm struggling to think of a sign or that would, that, that certainly isn't what we were thinking when we were talking about iconic signs.
Right.
I mean...
Yeah.
I, I would just think it should be a year that has a, where the signs of that era are a different, have a different character or whatever.
It helps to hear the, twenty fifteen is what we're talking about, actually. When I, when I think of that, as like, I mean, ten years ago sounds like a long time ago, but twenty fifteen doesn't.
It should be, I, I'm thinking more like twenty-five. That's pre-two thousands, right? You know?
That's as, that's as high as I would go, but I think I would...
I could live with limiting it to the last century, yes.
I'm with you.
Okay, twenty-five years then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Final comment is more of a question, but I was just confused on the, your, I apologize. On the presentation you made, there was a discussion of roof signs, projecting roof signs, and there was a closely flower shop was one, which was closed, and next to it there was a picture of Allendale's and Fashion Fides, and we could pull that up.
Which was actually a, a projecting architectural element.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. I don't understand why that would be prohibited under, under a sign code as a sign extending above the building, because it's actually below the facade of the building.
And that's, I, my apologies, those are not great representations. The code does allow signs on architectural projections.
Okay, so that, those would be permitted under the...
Would be permitted, but something like the flower shop would not be permitted because it's projecting above the roof line or the parapet line.
And misspelled, parapet. Never mind.
Branding.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, thank you for that, that clarification, that really helped. Those were my questions. The only comment I just wanted to make, and I just, it's sort of echoing comment made last time we were here, it, you know, I, uh, signs are both structural elements and speech acts, right? And I get queasy with the depth of regulation that we have of what is speech. I know why we're doing it this way, I understand, but, uh, because it would be a very different regime to have much more permissiveness in signs. It would be, would be a radical change to say, okay, it's your property, you put up the sign you want, uh, and you can say whatever you'd like, um, but, you know, I just feel like saying for the record, this makes me uncomfortable to do this, and I, uh, someday I suspect that a Supreme Court will start agreeing that we need to, to allow more signs and, you know, we, when we talk about the size living on these signs, yeah, I mean, you know, uh, sometimes someone wants to paint their house purple, and the HOA may prohibit it, but does the city prohibit it even if purple suddenly takes on a political meeting? You know, at one point, there are lots of ways in which architecture itself can have expressive meaning. There are a lot of things that have expressive meaning, and, and, uh, you know, we, we regulate for the aesthetics of today, and I just hope that, you know, twenty years from now, another planning commission is ready to re-regulate whatever their new aesthetics are, or at least we're not blocking people from being, expressing themselves. And that's what I have to say.
I'll just counter, I mean, the code, like all, this aspect of the code is a living document. It can be modified, it can be amended, so this is a snapshot of what we're thinking now, and it can be changed.
And I do want to add, because I don't want to forget this, uh, having taken you all through forty minutes of complaints, actually, this is an incredibly well-done document. The pictures are amazing, the tables are amazing. I've looked at so many sign codes over the years, and they're so hard to understand. You have to piece them through, you have to guess, you have to make diagrams to try to figure out what they're saying. I think that you are going to make, that, that this will be easy for people to understand if they wish to obey, and it may even be easy to enforce, so thank you for the work.
I'd like to add, sorry, uh, just to clarify my point on abandoned signs, I think the requirement to take them down after a given time, uh, goes against the content neutrality regulation. The only way that, i- if, if a sign is abandoned, what is it saying about its speech? It's saying that the business is no longer there, but that's still speech, uh, referring, even if it's incorrect. Um, I just, I don't see how that survives a content neutrality requirement.
The, the owner and author of that is no longer representing it, though.
They don't have to, that's not the requirement for speech.
But in order to keep it maintained, it has to be spoken by somebody.
Well, then you have a maintenance rule, and if it becomes a, a safety factor, then we have regulations for that.
That's way beyond what we're talking about here. I, I hear your point, but that's, when it comes to what we're talking about here and maintaining, uh, you know, architectural representations and the structures within our city, there has to be, uh, some semblance of continuity of the construction and the ability to own and maintain it, and we can't just say that whoever built something, when they leave, you can't touch it because somehow it represents what they...
I'm not saying...
It seems like that's what you're saying.
No, I'm not saying that they can't touch it, I'm saying they can take it down if they want. It's the requirement that they must take it down within ninety days or whatever the timeframe is. That's what I'm against, the, the requirement that they take it down.
Oh, yeah, well, there's no requirement to take it down.
I thought, I thought you...
If it's not, if it's not the current use, there, there's a requirement to take it down after one hundred and eighty days. If it's not, you know, if it says flowers, but it's a, uh, you know, a, a, a nice hockey rink.
I'm sure, I, I, Commissioner Van Gullen has, has touched on sort of an important and interesting point in this, you know, the, the, so much of our sign regulation is based on regulating on-premises signs differently from off-premises signs. And I would agree with the point that I think you're getting at, which is that that distinction to me is not content neutral. And courts, courts are, some courts even seem to get that fact, and then they're just afraid to override it because they know that if they did, billboards would sprout up everywhere. Uh, but it is a contradiction of the heart of what, what we see everywhere, because it is very odd to say that, that, uh, the only commercial message you can put up is one that relates to your business, and somehow that is not content-based.
Exactly.
As, as the Ninth Circuit said once, once, and I think only once, if you have to read the sign to know if the law applies, then it's a content-based rule, uh, which made a lot of sense, and I never afraid to do it again, because nobody wants the proliferation of billboards, but, um...
Okay. We should move on from this.
I know. I have one thing.
I have one content question related to this, to the code.
Okay, then I'll, I'll save it, I'll, I'll say it to myself later.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll ask my one question. On the signs that are building signs, like you had the, the awning as an example, the projection of the awning is limited to the projection of the awning, and the sign has to no further extend that, correct?
That is correct.
I mean, this doesn't, the, by saying you can put the sign on that projection doesn't give them more projection. I just wanted to clarify that.
Clarify, Allison, it's, it needs to be flat on the surface of the awning, that is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was my technical question.
Actually, one more technical question, sorry?
Go ahead.
The area measurement, is that taken on one side or two sides?
It depends if it's a corner lot or not.
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking of a political sign. If you, to have a message with an area limitation, is that taken as the area of the image or the area of both images?
The front and the back of the...
Of the front and back? It's, it's, you don't, no, it, it's a sign. If, if it's on two sides, great, you got more message within...
And same with the sandwich board then, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, we've gotten to the end here. We have, and I am remiss for not having written down this, the one time I didn't bring anything with me. We had, I think, three things that we wanted to give a message about. One was the amount of temporary yard signage to increase, and if you can remind me of the other two, Ms. Stadniki, please.
Um, the A-frame signs citywide.
Yeah.
The delay of enforcement for non-conforming signs older than twenty-five years.
Yeah. I think that was it. So, can we have a motion?
I want to look at that to see if that would pass a challenge or if that, like, if we were challenged on the selection of twenty-five years as the, as the moratorium, um, I don't off the top of my head whether it would, that would survive a challenge, so I want to research that and provide that information to the city council along with your recommendation, because I don't want to make a recommendation to the council or pass along a recommendation to council that, um, could be illegal.
I think that's completely appropriate.
So I, I wanted to give you a heads up ahead of time that I, I may, um, couch that recommendation with, um, legal analysis that I provide to the council and, and to you as well.
Appreciate that.
And one more thing I wanted to mention, there is some language about the luminosity, um, Commissioner Van Gullen, that you asked about, so there, there are some parameters around that. I don't have it in front of me, but...
Thank you.
So, I'll move that we make a recommendation for the code as written with those three clarifying recommendations.
Chair, sorry, we didn't close the...
Oh. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Second.
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chairman Ente, second by Commissioner Jones. How do you vote, Commissioner Van Gullen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ente?
Aye.
Chair Roman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you for keeping us honest, Ruth. So again, I'll reiterate, now that we're here, a motion to provide this recommendation with the... here, a motion to provide this recommendation with those three clarifying amendments, if you will.
I'd second that, oh, good.
You can second it, Allison, but before we, we've, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't hear a repeat of, in, when it came to the signs citywide, sandwich boards, also that we wanted to recommend that there be a nominal fee for the engrossment part of
Oh, correct, yeah.
My mistake, yes, I have that.
Great, thank you.
I still second, yeah.
So, motion with, motion by Chair Rylman, second by Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Van Gelen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Te?
Aye.
Chair Rylman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you very much for that lively, and thank you to the, to MID for great work on that, and appreciate all the clarifying questions. So, we can move now to A1, Discussion of Draft Written Report to City Council Planning Commission Accomplishments and Proposed Activities of Upcoming Agenda Items for the Next Six Months, to authorize transmittal to the city council. And I hand it over to Ms. Stadnicki to tell us.
Good evening, commissioners and community members. For the record, I'm current planning manager Emily Stadnicki, and I'm very happy to present this next one. This item is an overview of planning commission's January through June accomplishments and proposed activity and upcoming agenda items for the second half of 2025. As a reminder, it is a city council policy that each of the city's commissions, boards, and committees provide a written report on their activities twice a year. In the first half of 2025, the commission reviewed and approved a conditional use permit for a child daycare center on Washington Boulevard, and a site plan review and density bonus for a cross-jurisdictional mixed-use project with 79 units, 15 of those in Culver City, at 13474 Washington Boulevard. The most consequential actions you took were your recommendations to the city council on the density bonus ordinance update, the objective design standards, and the subdivision ordinance update. You also made recommendations on accessory dwelling units and a zoning code cleanup, all of which were approved by city council and are in effect now. And of course, the comprehensive sign code update we just approved with additional recommendations. That is scheduled for council in July. And finally, you had study sessions on the Fox Hills specific plan and the Hayden Track specific plan. Looking forward, we currently have five projects with an entitlement application in, a new plan for the former Jeff Hotel project, now with a new development team. It has fewer rooms, but a similar footprint, and a handful of mixed-use projects. 100 Corporate Point with 351 units, 30 of which are low-income, 5757 Uplander Way with 1,077 units, with 78 affordable units, 6201 Bristol Parkway, 846 units with 36 very low, and 10950 Washington Boulevard, proposing 508 units with 77 affordable. You'll be seeing those in the coming months. We also have seven potential projects currently in the preliminary project review stage. Some have had community meetings but haven't submitted applications yet. They're all listed on page three of the staff report. I'll just highlight a couple. Oops. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Seven, please. Thank you, Ruth. 11304 Culver, currently proposing 143 new units that are 100% affordable. That's a cross-jurisdictional project with 89 units in Culver. And then we have 4315 Sepulveda Boulevard, a mixed-use project with 20 units and 14,000 square feet of commercial. We're ever hopeful that the Transportation Demand Management Ordinance updates in collaboration with the Public Works and Transportation Departments will move forward, so maybe the last quarter of 2025. And there will be more updates on the specific plans for the Hayden Track and the Fox Hills. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the planning commission's list of accomplishments for the first half 2025, the proposed activity and upcoming agenda items for the remainder of 2025, and authorize transmittal to the city council. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? One question?
One question. And, and if you don't know, that's okay. The 11304 Culver Boulevard, my understanding is that will, in the old days, that would come to us for a site plan review. Does that still happen under the new way of doing things?
Expedited process? Mysterial?
If you don't know, that's fine, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a good point. We need to double-check on that. It is 100% affordable, so it may not.
Because I'm thinking, I know that we have looked at 100% affordable for site plan, or for the parcel, anyway, I can remember.
Right.
Yeah, but maybe we don't need to anymore. Okay, thanks.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chairman Te. How do you vote, Commissioner Van Gelen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Te?
Aye.
Chair Rylman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you. Did we get any other items for comment, not on the agenda, for items on?
We did not receive any.
Okay. Items from staff?
I was just going to let you know, at this time, we don't have any items for our July meetings, but we'll keep you posted on that. We do have some mixed-use projects coming in August, one at the former NFL site, and one in Fox Hills, so that'll be later summer. And I just wanted to say that tonight is Chair Rylman's last meeting. We will be celebrating him at a future meeting, and present a summary of his work on the commission, but I just wanted to thank him for his leadership, and I've enjoyed working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have written something out, otherwise I am going to ramble a little bit, but it's kind of funny looking out, and, you know, I've been through multiple current planning managers, assistant city attorney, who's now city attorney, was in our group before, and started with Saul, and now Mark, and seen so many respected friends and colleagues come across the dais with me here, and it's been an amazing pleasure for me. And I'm, keep myself from crying as I say goodbye, but I really love being here and, you know, putting my heart and my mind into these technical and issues of our community. And tonight's discussion really kind of brings to, ahead a lot of the things, and the, the idea that we have such an important role to represent everybody in our community, and take into account things that we may not be thinking of, and may not be important to each of us, but are important to everybody else. And I really hope that you all continue on, especially with all of the housing and other things that are coming before us, and keep that, keep that moving. I know it's difficult, and I know that there's a lot of our community on one side or the other of these kind of issues, and it's important for us to just keep moving forward with doing the right thing for, for our community. So, it's been my extreme pleasure, and if there's any way for me ever to come back in the future, I'm going to try. So, and I will, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting, not about myself, but, you know, in the spirit of peace in the world. It's a, you know, big, kind of lame thing to just say peace in the world, but with everything that's going on, war and hate, and, you know, it, it hits home close to home. The, I don't know, for those who know the, the gentleman who sells ice cream with the bells on his cart, I've lived in Culver City for 20 years and bought a lot of fresa paletas from him, and now he's not there, and it doesn't make any sense. So, I want to adjourn with him in my mind.
Happy to second that.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Te.
Thank you. Moved by Chair Rylman, second by Vice Chairman Te. How do you vote, Commissioner Van Gelen?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Te?
Aye.
Chair Rylman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn passes with four ayes.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 8:37 PM.